Okay gentlemen, call this uh meeting of the regular city council today, April 7th, 2020. Do I have any additions to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. We have consent agenda. Approved minutes, regular council meeting, March 7th, 2020, and special council meeting, March 9th and March 26th. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion passes. Appropriation ordinance, four dash seven dash 2020, and the amount of six sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, and petty cash, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to department heads. Okay Jamie, do we hear anything from Jeff, anything other than what you had in your administrator report?
Um, nothing besides the sewer pond update that I sent out, that they were working on yesterday. They got everything under control from what I understand, so just about three gallons of non-communicable items.
It's a very good picture, so. Uh, anybody have any comments or concerns regarding all of that?
What's the timeframe on our fiberglass screen and then new pump delivery?
I'm not sure if everything is delayed because of that or not.
I'm sure the fiberglass is still going.
He said he said that um he said that'll just cover the sewer ponds, not the actual lines running through town. So, I mean, it'll do like it won't help if it clogs in front of my house, but if it's still flowing, it'll
Right, yeah. I was just curious, where was that, was that nine weeks and that's had to have been over a month ago?
It was.
Hasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, we gotta be over halfway there.
I went there first.
Right, we can ask Jason that.
Okay, any more discussion regarding electrical department? Moving on to water department, do we have anything from Jason? Other than what's on the administrator report? Do you have any questions regarding anything underwater department? Okay, moving on.
What about the uh, removing the grass inside the swimming pool, I mean, is that just something they're gonna give a price to us on?
It would just be them doing the work. So I don't know that it would
Right, I'd hear they're spending a lot, maybe, maybe, I mean, it's like a
I don't know.
It's probably, I mean, it's probably a twenty by twenty by thirty, maybe, it's a pretty big area, I mean, really, yeah.
I do know
It's growing in the cracks, is that what that is?
No, there's a grass area on the southwest corner of the pool.
In the pool.
Oh, in the Finston area.
Right.
And I do know
And what are we doing there then?
They wanna put concrete, they wanna take out that grass and put concrete.
That probably is a thing to mow and do.
We have to take
Probably take a push mower and, I'm seeing
And things get messed up when push mowers go in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I, I don't know, yes. I guess who knows, I guess keeps up the
Okay, do we have any more discussion regarding water department? Streets park department, do we have any questions regarding that or any news?
Did we lose our deposit then on that seal machine, or did we, did we?
I think everything's still
Whenever we didn't, we didn't get any part of it indebted?
Just the
Because we hadn't got the seal material yet, but do we have the machine, did we pay to rent the machine, but then now we don't have the material?
We, I think, the way I understand it, we have the material, which will be good, but it's designed to put down when it's cold.
Well, I thought, well, it says right here, we have not received the cracked seal material yet.
No.
Looking at, but I was just curious if we lost our twenty-one-hundred or
To rent the machine?
Out of haze, did we have, did we, do we have the machine?
No, I don't think they delivered the machine or anything.
So we haven't, we're not half committed and gonna lose that?
I don't think so.
That's the only question I've got, we can check on that.
All right, having, if there's no more questions, then move on to grant administrator? Do we ever hear anything from Lisa?
No, I haven't talked to her, um, talked to her a little bit about the park, but
Right.
The school signs are still, and who knows now?
Okay.
Did you have a question?
What about the fountain in the, in the square, is that, is that something they're, they're gonna put the fountain back in?
They were gonna start yesterday, from what Jeff told me, um
So like, are we gonna have like a ceremony at some point, just to keep it covered, or like the, who knows, right?
Supposed to go with Jubilee, we have a plaque and another little thing to add, but
Right, yeah.
Hopefully, we can still have that soon.
I just thought it'd be nice for whoever donated the money to fix the fountain, if that's public for people to know, you know?
Mm-hmm, yep, there will be a plaque, and then um, there's another little piece we're adding to it, so it'll be really nice once it's all in, but that piece was sent off at the end of March, and we should be looking at getting that, but um I wish we could keep it covered until the ceremony, but I don't know that I don't know that we can.
I wouldn't recommend this to
The top's pretty fragile, so I don't know how we would get around. And if we put it off till closer, that makes me nervous, 'cause I don't want them to get busy and then not have time. I don't really want another Jubilee without a fountain.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Moving on to police chief. Do we have anything from Chief Adams, besides what's on the administrator report?
No.
Anybody have any questions regarding, oh, I'm sorry Jamie?
I said no.
Okay, anybody have any questions uh, regarding the police department? Okay, moving on to fire chief, we have anything from Chief Sanders?
No.
Okay, anybody have any questions regarding fire department? City administrator Jamie?
So in my section of the report, I had put in, I don't know if you guys got to it, um, but I had put in Sarah and Sarah Fisher, Joe Christie, and Crystal Meyer are working on a project for the senior class. Since school got cut short, they're looking at making banners. Um, like we hang around for Jubilee and the different, the different flag banner, looking things that we have. And so each banner would have a senior on it dedicated to them, and they just are requesting permission um, to hang those. And I told them I would bring it to you guys and
I think that would be a really good idea for council to go ahead and approve that, especially since the seniors are missing out on something that all of us have uh, had the pleasure of
Um, Jeff told me there's twenty-eight of them.
What's that?
Uh, Marshall asked if there was twenty, if there were twenty-three pole, or twenty-three available spots, and I was, Jeff had told me there's twenty-eight, I believe, so we were good.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing is, I was just gonna say that um, you know, we will hang them, I can hang them, you know, the city isn't gonna be out of, you know, the city doesn't have to do that. Just basically, just to say, you can use the flight poles, so.
You can do it with a ladder?
No, no, a man lift, but yeah, it won't take very long, but
I was gonna say, I can help too if need be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Anyway, yeah.
John, do we need a, we don't need a vote on that, do we?
I think consensus of council's for it.
Okay, that's what I thought, everyone's good with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay Jamie, go ahead and let them know that they have, they have council's permission and blessing for this.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other thing is the change in the office. I have been working remotely after the governor's orders came, or the executive order came out, and Jamie's been here at the office. I've been feeling all of the phone calls and working on the laptop while she's here. The system's worked out pretty well, um, I think in my email I had talked about the different calls that the police department's making. Um, like if they get a call, they're, they're not doing as much in-person contact, they're gonna try to take as much information through the phones as they can and limit their contacts with people unless it's absolutely necessary. And then the guys are still being instructed to maintain social distancing, I try to remind them to not get in the vehicles together unless it's absolutely necessary, and to sanitize and disinfect when they can. I've just been trying to keep up on all of them and making sure that everything's going.
Anything else Jamie?
Nope.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Jamie?
What uh and I know I've read the executive order and all that stuff, but Vince, how we are close to the public, is it that big of a deal to work here?
I was going off of like what I sent out in my update today. I was going off of what she said, if you can work remotely, then work remotely.
I just think having one person out of our entire city that's not working is not fair to the rest of them, in my personal opinion. Um, I've called the city of Stafford, they've got two people in their office every day. All of their employees are showing up to work every day, and they have it set up to discuss at their next meeting that if something changes, the people that stay in the office are all the administrators and department heads, and they send the rest of their employees home. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on it. You know, we, we had instructed Jamie when Jeff was gone that if people didn't wanna be at work, they could take vacation and sick leave. But we wanted everybody at work. So, that's my opinion on it, I mean, I don't know where you guys stand.
I, I guess I do agree, I was a little caught off guard for when we said, if, if nobody wants to come, if they don't feel safe, that's fine. They can stay home without their pay, or with their sick leave or vacation time, or if they wanna stay home without pay, it won't be held against them. I, I guess I was a little caught off guard, I wasn't aware it was happening, I guess.
I don't know, that's just how I feel about it, I mean, I don't think it's right that one person stays at home. But, my opinion and to guess that's, I don't know how you guess, but
No, that wasn't the conversation that we had on the phone last week, and I have been working.
I'm not saying you haven't. But what I'm saying is, I don't think it's fair that you're the only person out of the whole entire city that's at home. The county, and I understand the county's point of it, they have twenty-some employees, they're alternating people.
One stays home a week?
Yeah.
While getting paid and the other goes to work while getting paid.
Which I think is totally unfair to the boys on the county crew.
I'm not saying it's not, I
There's a lot of unfair things happening, I agree.
I just in my opinion, I think everybody needs to be at work, but
If we wanna rotate, that's fine, but I don't think there's any way that we can rotate and, and pay, I, I don't see how that's even close to fair, that we can rotate and pay. That's, that's my opinion.
Any other concerns, comments? Anybody have any thoughts on this?
I mean, we've talked about it, I think it would be best for our city administrator to be at the job, and I feel like we've made it pretty safe. Need to try to accomplish that, I think.
Kyle?
Yeah, I think I agree, I'd like you to be there.
You know, um I think that as long as business is being taken care of, I don't see the problem with having Jamie working from home, as long as she's able to conduct business and execute everything proficiently, I don't see a problem with it. Plus the fact that she's having to think about not only her health, but the health of her newborn baby. And I think that supersedes a lot of things, I understand where everyone's coming from on this, but I also think that it's prudent for her to stay at home. And if we need to rotate, that's one thing, but business can get taken care of remotely, it's being done quite a bit, this is all brand new to all of us. But I feel, in my opinion, there's nothing wrong with her staying at home and conducting business as long as she's able to take care of it.
There, I don't think there was any doubt, Mark, to be honest with you, with, through everybody, that she gets her work done at home.
Okay.
But I, I think it's best if our, our city administrator is, is here leading the, leading the city, from what I understand.
Okay, well, it's not up to me, it's my opinion, it's up to council.
I, I don't have any problem with rotation, I just don't feel that it's fair to rotate and have somebody at home that's, that's getting their full pay, I, I just, I, I guess, I guess, I don't see how there's any way business can be as usual, getting more done at home, or the same amount is done.
Well, it's not as usual, because we're close to the public, so I don't, like, if you work in an office setting, seventy percent of your time is being dealt with people coming in the door.
And, and that's why I don't think it's an issue, I mean, I understand, I mean, the banks are open, and they rotate, but they have people that are
That's fine, I'll come sit up here and work, I'm not arguing.
I'm just, I'm just stating, everybody else, they've got ten or fifteen people in a business, and they are closer, so I can understand where they rotate people in and out. I just think with two people in here, and being close to the public, I don't see any reason why we can't have both of you in here.
That is fine, I explained myself this morning, and that's why I offered that explanation, I'll lock the door so Jeff can't come in, and I'm not arguing, I'll be here tomorrow.
Any more discussion?
What, yeah, I guess, do you wanna talk about with daycare staff or?
Yeah, I mean
Well, I mean
I guess I'll be here tomorrow, if she can still come to the office, if not, I'll take my vacation time, you guys let me roll over.
Well, I just, I don't know, I mean
Or, or the fact that you guys sit there on one hand and say that I'm a salary employee and it doesn't really matter.
You guys, you guys are getting really close to needing a executive session for this.
So what would you like for us to do, John?
Well, I mean, if, if you're going to talk employee specific, it needs to be an executive session.
So I guess we'll wait till the executive sessions and discuss that? That'd be fine? Okay. Guess we'll go on to turn it up later.
Okay, all right, we'll add that at the end. Okay, John, you have anything?
No, I, I don't, other than those enumerated elsewhere.
Okay. All right, old business. Got the email from Jamie regarding the utility truck?
Yep.
Anybody have any comments, questions on that?
Did Jason figure out when he was going to get that, or?
He said he would, he didn't reply back to me. The whip, oh, pardon. Mark, I do have stuff with the WIT Center.
Okay.
Um, Ben messaged me and asked, um, he's been asked several times if we could get like a railing for people to like catch themselves, I guess, and he would put it at a level where like the little people and the big people could still reach it. And it would be a two-by-four, and it would be wrapped in the same carpet as the base, and then um he said with labor and materials, it would be um, one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars, but um, I didn't want to go forward with that with the other part of the
Basically, go and put it around the whole thing, so you've had kinda like
Right.
Not a bad idea.
No, I, I think that's a right, I just, yeah, two-by-four, laid flat, wrapped with cotton, carpet, four foot or so, yeah. I don't, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah.
I need a motion just for auditing purposes.
I'd make a motion to spend fourteen hundred and seventy dollars to put a railing around the WIT Center to come out of the one percent sales tax. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, no more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, got anything on the strategic plan Jamie?
No.
What about Jubilee update?
I've been getting phone calls upon phone calls on that Jubilee is happening, and I told them that we would look at discussing it as the meetings continue, um, I talked a little bit with Ryan about it, you know, right now, the carnival is booked, my bands are booked. But other than that, it's, I have one vendor, maybe two.
You won't know anything till the end of the month, probably?
Yeah, I was just saying, wait, kinda like we talked about, is what I'd like to do, I mean, it'd be nice, I mean hopefully, something changes along the way.
And I mean, if it doesn't, Jubilee is not gonna be
It, it's not gonna be like it has been in the years past, but it will still be something where everybody can get together and
Cause I, I know people have reached out and they're already canceling like class reunions, so
Yeah.
I mean, I just tell them that we're waiting it out and
Yeah. It's, it's good to be optimistic, but the reality is it's
Yeah, yeah.
I mean
Unfortunately, I don't think that we're, I hate to say this, but I don't think we're gonna have Jubilee this year. I don't think it's, this uh crisis that we're in around this country is gonna clear up anytime soon. Um, I hate to say that, 'cause I hope it does, but
How late?
I have my doubts.
Just telling us again, Jamie, you always said, what's the date again?
The end of the month, like
I would say by the first of May, we need to be making a decision, and of course, it'll probably depend on what the governor says.
Probably the next meeting, I mean, cause I'm gonna need to know
Next meeting is
Two weeks.
Yeah.
I, I imagine the reality is, Mark, you are right, I mean, I, I guess we can put it off as long as we want, but I'm, I'm sure my intuition says it is, he's right.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe a guy can have the fountain unveiling and, and
Do it live.
Do it live like this
Yeah.
With, with one or two city guys and the council could be there
I thought.
And have a presentation of something, and that's, I mean, we can still have something, but it's not anything
That right there would be a great idea, if we could have something, have minimum people there, we could televise it live, um if people want to come, they can watch from a distance.
Right.
Um, I hate, I hate this, because people have been looking forward to this fountain going back in, um but we, we have to follow what the governor says, and we have to make sure that we're keeping all of us and our citizens safe. Um, this is just really not a good situation to be in, um, I think that we may need to at the next meeting, come to a, um, we need to either make a decision then, or I, I don't see any other time when we could do this prior to May first.
Right.
All right. New business.
I would say so.
I would say that's right, and I'm sure it's inevitable. I don't have a lot of choice.
I guess we'll know what the governor does, 'cause this expires April nineteenth. So our next council meeting will know what the governor's done for the future.
Right, right.
So make the decision pretty easy then.
Yep.
When is the next meeting?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay, and that expires on the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I guess we'll know by then. All right, any more discussion on that? Moving on to new business. Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero four. Temporarily expanding authority of the city administrative act on behalf of the city, and ratifying previous decisions regarding of the COVID-19 emergency. Comments, questions, gentlemen?
I, I will, Mark, I'll just briefly add, this is the resolution prepared by the Kansas League of Municipalities. But for, I insert language related to playgrounds, because there's been some issues in other locales regarding oh, whether you have to shut down the entire city in order to shut down a playground, the entire, or city park in order to shut down a playground. Um, so I specifically added the language playgrounds.
So this, this came from you, John, then, this is just following suits from other municipalities?
This is, this is, it's literally, the only difference between this and what most municipalities do is the language city of St. John. Um, this was suggested to me once before, suggested to Jamie by me once before, and then as issues arose and things changed, I said, suggested again, specifically to avoid the need to have special meetings to adjust to issues, if council needs to cancel a council meeting um, in two weeks, this allows her to do, uh I guess, run the city from a bunker, so to speak. The thing in it that that I like personally was the issue related to the playgrounds, and I understand law enforcement has had to specifically um, break up some groups, and that was done at, at the request of Jamie. Um, but um, the language regarding city staff, being able to make decisions about prioritizing city operations, uh, if it comes to the point where a decision has to be made about, for instance, not bringing in certain people, or reassigning certain people for certain, for certain tasks. Um, it allows her almost to cover herself when she's making those kinds of decisions.
I guess it looks like to me, like city parks, playgrounds, you know, to shut those down, I mean
Playground.
Right, I mean, you've read through this, Jamie, I mean, some of this stuff, you wanna make that decision, or you, would you rather just have a special council meeting, you know what I mean?
You guys can call special meetings, it doesn't have to be me calling the meetings.
I just think that's a lot for one person to make a decision on.
I think it is too, I mean, I know the school and the, I know the school has called a special meeting to you know, change things throughout according to what happens. But
Yeah, it might be best if you have a decision.
I don't know, I think it'd be better if we made it as a whole, instead of making her do it and then having issues and, and she has to deal with it.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think anybody, one person should have that on their shoulders, but I don't know. That's how I feel about it.
The liability goes right there with, I don't know if that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, so my understanding that council just wants to keep it the way it is right now, all decisions line with council?
I would leave it that way, yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Everybody else agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Moving on. Ordinance ten seventy-three dash twenty, curfew.
So the curfew and the noise ordinance, well, all three of them are just projects that we're working on, if you guys want to go ahead and adopt them and we can get them sent off to the newspaper, we can do that, um we were instructed to limit our agendas, but I wanted to get this out to you guys, 'cause I know Cause I know Alan is having issues with school being out and kids causing.
I only briefly looked at the curfew and the noise ordinance. Well, I looked at the curfew. I briefly looked at the noise and the house numbers, cause they weren't that much of a concern to me, I guess, as much as the curfew, cause I know they had some issues. I'm good with the curfew and I'd like to review the other two and maybe look at them next meeting. I don't know how, whether you guys looked at all of them or.
I mean, I'd like, kinda like explain that a little bit upon.
And the only change with the curfew, John, it would be, I think the one that we wrote up was, was it midnight to six?
Oh, did you change my times?
No.
Midnight to five.
Midnight to five. And Alan wanted, well, he wanted ten to six, ten to eight.
I don't get why. I don't care with midnight to five.
He's still through, he works in St. John.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean.
Alan wanted it ten or eleven, I think, to six.
I mean, I used to have to be at work at seven o'clock in the morning. I, I don't know how eight o'clock would work.
Yeah, no, I, I think midnight to five is fine. I mean, I, I don't wanna bump it any earlier than that at harvest if, if there is some kids working on the farm.
Right.
Or before five. I mean, that's, we can't change those hours any. Midnight to five.
I think midnight to five.
I mean, don't get me wrong, it allows them to go to and from work, but, but the issue is it, it, the closer you get to eight o'clock, everybody and their dogs can be up anyways and.
I think he wanted six. I don't know what five.
Midnight to five is fine. I, I read it. I think it's okay.
I, I think.
I, I don't, I don't see us like, uh, having a major police overload by adopting this.
No.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't see it changing.
I will say, I don't know what the basis, I guess, I don't know what happened, which, uh, led Alan to request this. I don't know the context of this.
You had some problems.
They had some, they had some fourteen, fifteen and even younger kids out at two, three, two, three o'clock in the morning ringing doorbells, beating on houses and caused a big deal in the middle of the night.
Okay.
And this was kinda, I think.
Their parents were sleeping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I'm, I'm fine with it. We get it done with that one. The, the housing, the, the house number one, I, I just wanna make sure we give everybody that, that, that May thirty-first, not, not to jump. I, I think we're pushing the timeframe with what's going on everywhere.
Like I said, I haven't even, I just glanced through.
But I'm, I'm okay with that one, but I'm a little worried about this one. And then I wanna, I want somebody to explain the noise one to me.
Yeah, on the house numbers, that, that ordinance was given to Alan about two months ago. That's.
Well, I had been working on that before.
I mean, I, I, I don't disagree with what's there. I just maybe change that May one to, or May thirty-one to August thirty-one or something like that, you know?
Well, and that's, that's why I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Yeah, I, I liked it. I liked it. He, he said right, you know, we've all been born and raised here and, uh, you know, Tori's nice.
Well, but here's the thing, even me.
Even our city guys.
I went there and I ran on fire.
Well, he's Jamie.
But I mean, it's still hard to tell because there are no house numbers. You're like, well, which house is it? Cause there's three of them and there's no numbers.
I'm not opposed to it. I just wanna back it up three or four months or two or three months and let's, let's step into it.
And I don't, I don't know that we need to adopt it until all of this is said and done, cause we don't know the dates.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I, I wanna hold on that one. And then the noise one, John, did you draft the noise one? I mean, I guess you obviously did, but where's that based off of?
Uh, again, I, I know he requested it and I'm not certain what the story is behind it. Something about, um, there may have been something done to him personally when he was home one night, somebody playing music just to piss him off. I, I, I don't know.
That's exactly what.
That's kinda what I gather.
Seriously?
Yes.
Oh, no kidding.
He has someone driving by his house frequently with very loud music.
And, and I will say those noise ordinances are more common than the curfew ordinances.
Yeah. I, not to be dumb, but it's fifty-five decibels, like really loud.
I don't know. I, so you can.
I can hear, so it don't matter.
Mason wore out, don't you pick up louder than fifty-five decibels?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not being a smart, I mean, if a tractor comes through town in the middle of the night, is that louder than fifty-five decibels?
Can you hear him?
I will suggest that, um,
maybe the chief explain how he's going to enforce it, because if he rides a ticket for somebody violating this ordinance, I'm not sure how I'm gonna be able to prosecute it in court.
Correct. That's, that's, yes. How do you document that and prove it?
I mean, are we going to buy equipment?
Yeah. We'll talk about that one. Let's table that and the house number one.
So you guys want to, uh, table, uh, ordinance ten seventy-two dash twenty and ten seventy-one dash twenty for our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We'll table those?
Motion.
All right.
I'd make a motion to approve ordinance ten seventy-three dash twenty on the curfew.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Pool.
So, the pool needs work before it's ready to be opened and along with everything else, we don't know. Um, I know I talked a little bit with Ryan about that and there, I know he feels there's nothing wrong with getting it ready. And then maybe we'll be able to open it. Um, I know Stephanie and Allison have both contacted me. And I think that they said that their employees might, or the people that they plan to, to hire again, would be willing to, to help get everything if it ends up being last minute, but just wanted to bring it to your attention. I know a lot of the other communities are, they're not even making decision, like they, I think the second meeting in April, a lot of cities said that they'd start talking about the pool, but we haven't got really any direction from the league about, about pools yet.
What, what have we gotta do to it? Is it cracks or what's wrong with it?
I, I think it's just. I think it's been repaired. I mean, I.
The regular like cleaning and I think they painted every year.
Yeah. I would say they, the time slotted that for to work on the pool in April and May-ish, so just do it.
I mean, I feel like it ought to be at least up and ready. That way if we can't open the pool, we aren't waiting another month and a half and then the kids only have a month to swim.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll talk to Stephanie and, and just bring the employees to the next meeting to hire. Not burn them, but burn the names and we can get everyone hired and we'll have everything ready.
Pending the ability to open it.
Yeah, something like that concrete you were, they were talking about Ford, you know? I mean, if that doesn't happen, then.
Right.
You know, I mean.
That can be done during the season.
At least get the pool ready to open.
Yeah.
The pool can be, uh.
I would be more concerned about getting it ready than.
Just in case, but we have no idea whether or not what's gonna happen, but we can at least be prepared and if something does change, then we're that much ahead of the game, so.
I guess I would just say that I would rather focus on working on the pool to get it ready rather than tearing out the grass and pouring concrete.
Right.
So just make Jason and them aware of that.
Yeah.
Good. Any more discussion? Okay. All right, Jamie, what do you got on summer mowing?
Um, I just, we had talked about contracting it out. We talked about hiring more employees. But I, I just wanted to see what you guys wanted done with how we were gonna handle mowing, cause it's begun.
Do you think if we advertise, would you get any quality young people?
Well, you know, I don't know. There's so many kids now that, I mean, even my nephew that was in college, they won't let him do his job that he had for the summer intern. So I mean, we may have some college kids.
I wonder if you.
That would be willing to work part-time. I think we probably oughta advertise for at least maybe two part-time people for mowing and, and stuff like that in the parks and properties and everything else.
Totally agree.
And then if it don't work, then maybe we'll let you contract it and out.
Okay.
Sorry, me?
Yep.
All right, any more discussion? Moving on, hatch renewal quote.
Maybe this isn't under mowing really, but, um, you know, we talked about putting the truck parked in where we don't have anything growing right now as far as crop. What are we gonna do with that? Because eventually that would be a mess. What do you do?
What are we doing? We've got a, the city's got a bush hog mower and tractor. That's how they mow some of their other stuff.
I, I, yeah, I would not like to do that. I mean, that's, that's.
We might, we could maybe spray it.
Maybe you could, we could hire a spray, put some rubber side down and it would be able to stay clean.
Somebody to check into for.
But we gotta be careful what we put out there.
Cause there's.
Because of all the water wells.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so. So maybe it's one of them bills, we maybe pay someone to work it too.
Yeah.
Just keep it this thunder over the summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe we'll get something, find out anyway by next meeting.
Yeah.
We might be getting out of control.
Yeah, I guess. Or somebody could sit out there for three days and mow it on the back of it, on the tractor and bush hog.
Yeah. We'll figure it out.
Okay. Hatch renewal quote.
So that is just the yearly maintenance. It didn't go, last year it had gone up, I don't remember how much, but this year it stayed the same.
It went up to three thousand last year.
Right.
Yeah.
And it stayed the same this year. That's me and everyone.
I thought somebody else has got a sheet.
I would move to approve the hatch proposal for three thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, gentlemen, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn into land banks?
I guess, uh, I'll open the land bank meeting. So first off, and John, I've got both of these signed. Um, Darlene Steinmates, the property at nine seventeen Northwest Street. Um, they wanna donate it to the land bank. The house has actually been cleaned up. Um, there is a couple other items on the property that they're still getting moved and cleaned up, but, um, we do have a, uh, John, I went ahead and had John do a warranty deed on it. And then we had to have a release of mortgage, which I have both of them signed. Um, and I think, did you send that to everybody, John?
Did everybody? No, I just sent it to you and Jamie.
Okay. But everything's clear and here's a letter from John.
He's got a huge hole where they dug that thing out. Are they gonna bring dirt in there or are they bringing dirt in there?
That I don't know.
I hope we don't get ourselves in a pickle on that.
Well, we're, well, I don't know. Uh, we'll, we'll know that here in just a little bit. So I guess, you know, I mean, you guys can read that and, um, if you guys want. Yeah, if you guys.
The only issue was the mortgage, so with release of the mortgage, then title's clear.
Right, and I've got that release signed and I've got the deed signed too. Jamie's got both of them. So I guess we just need a motion to accept the property from Darlene Steinmates into the land bank. Send it. You got a motion? Your second?
Second.
You got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. So with that being said, um, I do have someone that has already filled out an application to purchase that property to move a house in on, build a house on. And I guess before we make a decision, do we want to open it up to somebody or do you wanna just review the, the application and go from there?
What, what do you?
Open it up for other people to apply for it. Or would you rather look at this application and make a decision and go on down the road?
I mean, I guess if we have someone pretty interested that will build the house there, I'm not really interested in opening it up to anyone else because, I mean, I guess anybody else is gonna do the same thing.
Somebody's came to you for it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, that's.
And, and like I said, the application's here. Uh, John, can you clarify? And so you guys got the, the land bank deal? So for that whole tract of property, is it three hundred dollars?
Oh, yes.
Because it says lot slash partial.
Well, I mean, it, it generally your intention when you guys adopted this policy was to sell, build a lot for three hundred dollars.
So that's the whole property?
I, I will say, I will say that, um, the land bank statute is specifically set up to allow the land bank to basically treat each piece of property as it sees fit. So if, and, and there have been instances in the past where, um, you guys have, um, put the property up, accepted applications and chose, um, from those applications, almost I would say on an arbitrary basis, uh, based on what you believe the property will be used for best use or, or whatever. Anything you guys decide, you can do with that property, as long as it's in an open and clear and transparent manner. It is, it is specifically set up for you guys to, um, even pick winners and losers, so to speak.
So basically we can do as we see fit?
Yeah, I mean, the, the reason for adopting policies is just to, again, to be, uh, transparent. And, and really, in my mind, the thing that, and I kinda was trying to look at these before you guys, it's been a long time, is, uh, one of the, 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 the third priority is, priority is for homeownership with preference given to applicants who intend to reside in the, the completed structure for two or four years. Um, and so, you know, if, if, if that's one of the policies and you've got somebody coming forward and says, I wanna build a house and I intend to reside in that house versus somebody that says, I wanna build a house and I wanna rent it out. Uh, or I'm not from the area and I wanna build a house and rent it out. It allows you to kind of discriminate between those people, so to speak. Um, because one of your priorities is housing in the city of St. John and attracting people to live in that house. So in, in other words, there's just no wrong and right way to handle this.
Right. And Mark, I guess I should have probably scanned that in and, and sent you a copy of it, but didn't really think about that.
That's all right.
Application, but I mean, we can discuss it. I mean.
Um, I just have one question. Uh, the person that applied, uh, for that, they're, they're, they're ready to go, I, I, the way I understand it.
Um, I spoke with him today. He's been pre-approved for a lot of money. Um, I think now they're looking at, um, part of his, his approval for the money is he's gotta figure out, he's gotta submit to them what he's gonna build so they can see it before they're gonna approve it a hundred percent, but he's never had an issue in the past of, of getting a loan.
Okay.
I, I don't, I've not seen this application, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that the city is going to be hard pressed to find somebody who's actually going to wanna, want one of these lots to build a new house on.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm mainly thinking myself, that, uh, we're, we're not exactly getting people chomping at the bit to come to, uh, St. John and build. Um, if we've got someone that's, uh, uh, doing quite a bit of legwork to get this property so they can build on it, um, I'm a-okay with that.
Well, and, and I mean, I don't really foresee this guy hopefully not going anywhere. Um, and, and I guess if you guys are okay with it, um, three hundred dollars like it states, I think three hundred dollars is pretty cheap, because if you don't build for another three months, we don't have to mow it either.
And it's in the condition it's in, we have no liability.
We have no liability. It's, it's the way it is.
Yeah, that is right, John. I mean, we have.
And, and let me, let me, you, you're gonna have liability right now. If there's a hole in the ground, once, once you accept that deed. But again, if, if you're deeding out the property, that liability's gonna terminate when the transfer of the convenience occurs.
Right.
That's what I need you to know.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
And I don't know, Marshall.
I shouldn't say hole.
Yeah.
You, you guys are gonna have to vote on, on that application anyways, but if there is a lender involved, or they may require title work, which I guess works in the city's favor too, in case, God forbid I made a mistake when I looked at the, the record, but, um, I don't know, are, if the lender's gonna require a real estate contract or not.
Well, I don't know. I guess if, if, if that's the case, I mean, we'll just do what we gotta do, but, um.
Okay.
All, all fees covered by the purchaser?
You just need to put that.
You just need to put that in there somewhere, that, I mean-
Well, let, let me rephrase it, if, if he's, if, if the application fee is three, if you guys are only charging three hundred dollars, if you're, if you're gonna accept that for three hundred dollars, and the lender's not gonna care, then we can go ahead and do a deed.
Okay.
Because he's gonna own it, the property at that point anyways.
Right, he's gonna actually own it, so there won't, it, none of it between him and the mortgage company, or his lender, if we deed it to him first, right?
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say is, he's not intending to take out a loan to, to spend three hundred bucks.
No, no, so, um, I guess we have an application from David Allen Adams and Cassie Adams for the purchase of the nine seventeen Northwest Street property to build on, um, here a motion to accept that for three hundred dollars.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, um, and just one more-
Do a deed.
Do what?
You want me to do a deed?
Yeah, I guess go ahead and do the deed on it.
And if Jamie could go ahead and get that stuff filed right away, that release and that, that other one.
Okay, um, the only other thing I'll just update you guys real quick on, we do have another inquiry on Second Street?
No.
No?
No.
Any more?
I talked, I talked to the grandson, and it's East Second, I think it's, I think she was looking at Kelch's Lot.
Okay, well-
But she kept telling me E, or West Second, and I, and Amy McVeigh, and I'm like, Amy McVeigh has nothing to do with these properties.
We have had a little bit of interest in people looking at some of the lots that have contacted me, wanted to know what was available.
Yeah, I think it's gone back and forth, so-
So-
It could be, but-
We could have another that we may not have to go and maintain shortly, hopefully.
It sure looks a lot better on Second Street.
Yeah, it does.
It just changed, I mean, kudos to everybody involved on that.
And there is still some, you know, dirt work that's gonna have to be done before this starts rolling, I mean, is that something?
I think the city guys will probably just have to, I mean, they've got the tree pile to haul off, and I think probably haul some dirt in.
They're planning on hauling that off. I was curious what you guys thought about, you know, if someone would like to mow that for the summer, you know, someone that didn't have the equipment, maybe tear down the houses but likes it, you know, and look at it out there, we're, we're looking for, you know, somebody that can watch.
Volunteers.
Yeah, yeah, just to-
A neighbor.
People that, you know, like the progress of cleaning some of these houses up, just throw it out there.
All welcome.
Yeah, yeah, um, I do know there's been some donations made to the land bank, roughly four thousand.
Lately, yes.
So, I think there's been between four and five thousand dollars donated to, to the project of cleaning up housing, so-
I've had several comments, people like it.
They do.
Definitely made the right decision, I, I haven't heard one negative thing yet.
I haven't either, so-
No, there's, there's been quite a few people that have said that they love what's going on with the land bank, so, yeah, I think we're, they, they see that we're doing the right thing right now, and they love that we're cleaning it up.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, on this, on this deed, or in accepting the application, there is a, a policy that requires, uh, construction to begin with in thirty days, and I know we're in difficult times right now, does, do you guys wanna fall through on some of these requirements for-
I'd say we sell it and let them do what they wanna do with it.
Would construction just be classified really as just maintenance, I mean, is that-
As far as I'm concerned, that's-
I mean, if, if dirt smoothing and landscaping is-
The, the thing is, is, and I talked to them today to see where they were at, and they were already, they pretty much picked out a design, but they hadn't contacted anybody because they weren't a hundred percent sure that they had the property, it's hard for somebody to move forward when-
Absolutely.
You know, um, he's saying, you know, if we get it, we'll be on the phone tomorrow. So, I, I guess in the application, does it say that in the app, it doesn't say that in the application?
No, but we used to have them sign something that they're going to abide by the requirements of the land bank policy, yeah, that the applicant must agree with conditions set forth above the land bank policy.
Yeah, I mean, thirty days is unrealistic.
I, I mean, I, I think it's gonna be unrealistic at this point.
Six months is pushing it, isn't it?
I mean, with council's permission, I'd rather just do a, a straight deed with just a, a soft closing, and Jamie says that money's been tendered, and then I'll send over the deed.
I'm good with that.
That's on me.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other land bank meetings, or, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn it.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion adjourned, back to you, Mark.
Okay, reopen this regular city council meeting, um, we have, uh, no other business except for executive session, um, we wanted to add, uh, one more executive session, um, and that would be for, uh, non-elected personnel, uh, what did, uh, how much time did we need on that one?
Um, ten minutes, I guess, maybe.
Motion to amend the agenda.
I would make a motion to amend the agenda to add a ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel matter. Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, okay, we have a five-minute executive session to discuss an employee evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will adjourn and come back into meeting at eight oh two. Okay, call this meeting back to order, um, do I have a motion on the table?
I'd make a motion to give Tori Perez a three percent raise according to her evaluation from seventeen dollars to seventeen fifty-one.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the table, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have a ten-minute executive session to discuss, uh, potential hire pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we will resume at eight thirteen. Okay, call this meeting back to order.
We need five minutes?
Going now.
Five minutes, surely. I'd make a motion to recess back into executive session for another five minutes, same people, to discuss potential hire pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter. Second.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will resume at eight eighteen. Okay, call this meeting back to order. Do I have a motion on the table?
I would make a motion to approve Jamie to have the authority to hire pending, pending a driving record and criminal conviction check at the specified wage that we determined. That work, John?
It all works.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We have another executive session, five-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter.
Do I need three, or five?
Um, three minutes, Mark.
Three minutes?
I don't know.
You said three minutes?
Yeah, she just needs three, not five.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we will resume at eight twenty-three. Okay, call this meeting back to order, we have another five-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel matter. Can I get a motion?
It said blanking, it's not recording.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we'll resume at eight twenty-eight. Call this meeting back to order, I asked that we have a, another, uh, ten-minute, uh, extension on the previous, uh, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Motion carries, we'll resume at eight thirty-nine. Okay, resume this, uh, regular meeting of council, I asked, uh, to get a motion for, uh, a ten-minute extension on the previous, uh, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we'll resume at eight fifty.
Three extension.
Okay, call this meeting back to order.
I would, uh, make a motion to increase Chief Adams' wage from twenty-four seventy-six to twenty-five twenty-five. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have one last ten-minute executive session, uh, non-elected personnel.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will resume at nine oh one. Having taken, uh, no action in the session, um, having no more business, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a second?
Yeah, Ryan.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.